I don't want this to be people warmer and all the I guarantee you so my doctor when I went for my checkup she said we're not gonna do what we're gonna do until
Man, it's gonna be warm that way.
You get Saturday, we've done the because you might be And if you are six I'm not able to ride, you'll see me riding through
Oh, man, you missed it all.
You missed it.
Darn it.
I think what the last thing happened at four o'clock or something or something like that.
Yeah. I don't even think about it.
Yeah, it's crazy.
No, well, the only thing is there's not one example on either side of my phone that I can go to that's kind of it tells me I was really terrible good, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, but natural sugar is way better than So what I do is we take like if I have a snack, I'll take
See, you have any churros?
And that's uh
No.
Oatmeal.
Go get one of those you got your elephant.
What's that?
Yes.
It's my favorite snack of all time.
It's a little warm, too.
Or they're free in your basement.
No, it's just
That's next to my office.
Honestly, the
Wow, can't have that on.
Right? So I like this one.
Yeah, you're the one only out here.
We can't do John Chenel.
Three tiered commission chairs.
Yeah, wow.
Do you all need to start wearing pants?
Yeah, yeah, everyone their age here, the hack gets taller and taller every year.
Get a little bit quicker or something.
The answer.
Those are expensive.
No. Nothing else?
Do they have them with this?
Everybody change up your names right now. All right, at six thirty, I called the order, the city of LaPierre Planning Commission meeting. Uh, Kim, you got roll call?
Got it.
Okay, in front of you are the, well, approval of the August fourteenth, twenty twenty five agenda. It's in front of you.
Salute.
We got a move and a support.
Support.
Uh, all those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. All right, and on to the minutes, the minutes are in front of you from the regular meeting held on July tenth of twenty twenty five. They are in front of you. What's your flavor?
I'll move the minutes.
You got a motion to move the minutes?
Support.
We got support, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. All right, here is the time of public comments. You have a couple, about a couple of minutes to address the commission if you so do, please. I'll open it up for public comments. Seeing none, I will close public comments. All right, public hearing scheduled to rezoning of six oh six North Saginaw Street, OS one to B one. Mr. Keller, take it away.
All right. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We've got a rezoning request on the table tonight for six oh six North Saginaw. This is currently the site of the Riverview Professional Building. Um, neighbors of LaPierre Office LLC is the applicant for this rezoning request. The current zoning of this property is OS one, office service, and the proposed zoning is B one, neighborhood business. So here we can see the subject parcel with a red outline, um, right next to Riverview Towers along Saginaw Street here. So you can see that this existing building at six oh six North Saginaw is built out right to the lot lines here. Um, and then they've got a small parking area here. Then you can see north of this parcel, we've got a fair amount of single family residential. But south of the parcel, we got Park Street and then Nepesing, we get into downtown here, so it'll look a little bit. Um, it, you'll see that represented on the zoning map, lots of single families to the north and to the west. And then to the south is much more commercial. Here is another image from Google Images. I kind of like these Google Images clips a little bit better because they show the tree cover a little better. So we've got Oregon here on the top, Oregon and Saginaw intersection, Mill Street, and then our subject parcel sits right on the corner of Saginaw and Mill Street. And then once again, there's Riverview Towers right here, Riverview Towers parking kind of behind the subject parcel as well as in front of Riverview Towers. Here we have the zoning map where once again, corner of Mill Street and Saginaw, we've got OS one, office service. And then to the south, we've got those two Riverview Towers parcels and then all of our B two. And then continue going south, our central business district along Nepesing, uh, Park Street behind Nepesing. Future land use map, so our future land use map, as we'll get into a little bit more here in the next few slides, the future land use map is one of the best pieces of evidence for any rezoning case. So the future land use map in this case shows the subject parcel as classified as medium density, single family. So that does not comply with the requested rezoning tonight as we'll look through a little bit more. Oh, just a friendly reminder on rezoning decisions from our zoning ordinance. So section seven, twenty three oh six B speaks to the standards of approval for any zoning map amendment. And it says, in the case of a proposed zoning map amendment, the city shall find one of the following to be true. Number one, the requested amendment is in compliance with the city master plan or that a mistake in the plan or changes in conditions in city policy have occurred that are relevant to the request. Or the property cannot be reasonably used as it is currently zoned and the proposed request represents the most suitable alternative zoning classification based on the master plan. So that rezoning standard number one, the requested amendment is in compliance with the city master plan. This is a pretty easy no for this standard. Uh, findings of fact, the city master plan, future land use map shows this property is classified as medium density, single family. So very simply, our staff comment, the requested amendment rezoning from OS one to B one is not in compliance with the city master plan. And to our knowledge, there has not been an applicable mistake identified in the plan. However, rezoning standard number two, the property cannot be reasonably used as it is currently zoned. Well, findings of fact, uh, kind of going along with that statement, obviously, the applicant could, the applicant has the ability to occupy this space um, with any use by right or use permitted by special land use in the OS one district. So some permitted uses in OS one include publicly owned buildings, funeral homes, personal service establishments, uh, barbers and hairdressers, banks, office space, data processing or computer centers, medical office, medical offices. So the permitted uses in the B one district include all of the permitted uses in OS one plus only five additional uses. So those additional uses are municipal buildings, post offices, dry cleaners, laundromats and commercial establishments or retail establishments. I'm gonna go on the applicant's response to this standard next. So despite working with an office broker for the past two years, we have been unable to secure an office tenant for the vacant spaces. And we believe it will be impossible to lease. We have received significant interest from various retail and service oriented businesses. These include an antique shop, a hobby shop, a baker looking for client meeting and display space, a flower shop and a small boutique. For our staff comment for the standard, it appears the applicant has made a multi-year good faith effort to use the property as it is currently zoned and has been unsuccessful. The B one zoning district only allows five additional uses compared to the OS one district. However, general retail uses are not allowed in OS one and they are allowed in B one. And that seems to be the main driver for this rezoning request is the applicant wants to have retail uses as a permitted use uh, for the spaces in Riverview Professional Building. Both staff findings, a summary of the two staff comments we just read, the future land use map identifies this parcel as medium density, single family housing. This classification is not consistent with the applicant's request. However, the owner of the property has faced significant challenges with using the property as it is currently zoned. Moreover, the B one district allows just five additional uses when compared to the OS one district. And these additional uses are municipal buildings, post offices, dry cleaners, laundromats and retail shops. But it is staff's recommendation that based on the information provided, uh, provided to us, the request appears to meet standard number two in section seven, twenty three oh six B, which is our zoning standards of approval. And therefore, staff encourages the planning commission to recommend approval of the rezoning request to the city commission. Happy to answer any questions you all may have as we consider this request. I don't think the applicant is here tonight.
Okay.
I'm a little surprised by it.
All right, we got everything.
Yeah, you have a question. Um, I didn't, I couldn't tell by the, uh, the schematics here, but this building's got apartments on the second floor.
Sure does, yeah.
Yeah.
So those are currently considered an existing non-conforming use because apartments on the second floor are not allowed in OS one. So as long as they kind of maintain and they don't expand, they're fine to continue that use of land. Um, and it sounds as though if this were to go to B one, there is no intent to change the existing configuration of the second story. They want to keep those apartments in there.
Mr. Keller, are apartments permitted in the B one zoning district?
No.
Are they permitted in the B two district? Just looking at the zoning map, you know, it feels a little silly saying this because it is adjacent to B two zoning district properties. But it's a bit of an odd request to rezone to B one when you're surrounded by, was it R one on one side and B two on the other? Um, it would be an odd place to just put a random B one property. Um, but I didn't have the opportunity to spend a lot of time looking at the difference between B one and B two properties. I mean, the building is what it is. It's not a terribly large building, it's got apartments upstairs, it's got a small little parking lot. I don't know if there's much difference they can do between B one or B two. Um, but that's something I think we should explore. I'd hate to just randomly slot in a B one property when it's adjacent to B two already.
I understand the sentiment there. This property has sort of acted as a bit of a buffer um, between our downtown, uh, higher intensity commercial uses and then moving north to more single family res. So I would actually contend that B one might be better than B two here because B two allows a lot of higher intensity commercial uses. And, um, you know, I would encourage us to keep the future in mind with this rezoning request. I don't know if B two is right on this parcel, but I think B one, um, you're kind of splitting hairs between OS and B one, I would say.
All right, well, uh, any more questions before I open the public hearing? Go ahead, no, it looks like we have a few.
On the parking. Okay, we have a statement, sorry. It is safe to assume there's adequate parking? Does that take into consideration the apartments on the second floor, their requirements?
It does.
Okay, and is it? Would a better statement have been, there is adequate parking rather than assuming there is?
Oh, it's hard to nail it down without knowing exactly what uses will occupy the spaces. You know, we can get pretty close by saying there'll probably be retail uses. And then if we use the retail uses parking standard, it's one space for three hundred square feet. So most of these units are pretty small, um, from their floor plan they've submitted. So that's where I say it's safe to assume because I don't know exactly what the, you know, true uses of land that will occupy there. I don't want to, you know, miss stuff in that wording, but it's, yes, it is safe to assume.
Mr. Elwood?
If it were to get rezoned, would they, depending on what goes in there, are, are they talking maybe fire suppression? Is that, would that be a requirement?
Mm-hmm, that's a building code issue, I think, probably, depending on the uses. So I know that I mentioned a baker in there as a potential tenant they've got. Um, they have been very clear that they're not looking for any sort of like coffee shop or cafe with that baking. They clearly want it to be just a display area and then kind of a meeting place for clients. So I think fire suppression would be required when it's required. For lack of my understanding there.
Is this, are new owners or is this same owners have owned that space for a while?
Relatively new, yeah.
The applicant is here now.
Here now.
Okay.
So I do have a question.
Yeah.
As well. Um, so I noticed in the verbiage that it said a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars had been spent on that building over the last couple of years. Um, I mean, that building's been in disrepair as long as I've been in LaPierre and it's really never been occupied. I wondered if there's any attempt gonna be made to spruce up the outside because it doesn't look like something you'd want to do business in. So just general question, I guess.
So for, um, when, how our process works is that when a new tenant would come into this space, they'd then have to get a zoning permit. Like we're, we're gonna look at a text amendment to the zoning permit section just in a little bit. And when that happens, we kind of have a wide net to cast to check for compliance of, you know, kind of every topic under the sun in the zoning ordinance. One topic that we are constantly finding on zoning permit requests is parking lot maintenance. So that would be kind of a question for when we talk about the tenant, when we talk about occupying of tenants. Um, the parking lot is absolutely in disrepair now, there's no striping in it. Um, so it's hard to speak to site improvements at this point in time because I really want to keep us focused on um, zoning classification and moving forward into the future of that. But there will be opportunities to get that property a little bit more into compliance than it currently is now.
Thank you.
Uh, this is a public hearing. Go ahead, were you gonna make another comment?
If, if it's rezoned to B one, is it still special land use?
For which?
Like if a tenant comes in?
Retail is permitted in B one.
Okay.
Permit, no special land use, so they just need a zoning permit to come in and occupy. If the proposed site changes were very minimal, when if it, if we're just having a tenant that's occupying an existing space in LaPierre, um, and they're not proposing site changes at that time, then a zoning permit is all that's required. Depending upon if site changes were proposed, then it might kick it to a site plan. But still, it would be a permitted use, so we wouldn't have any special land use consideration for retail uses.
All right, I'm gonna open.
The apartments back to that.
Yeah.
They were to make any changes, would they lose their non-conformity?
They would, yeah, but specifically to the apartment use, right? So there is the potential that this gets rezoned and then five or seven years down the line, you know, they're having trouble finding tenants and they want to abandon the apartments upstairs and then maybe turn the, that upstairs level into more retail space or something like that. They are allowed to do that, but if they did anything to the apartment use right now, then it would kick it to, we would not allow that. We would not allow that. Yeah, can't increase the number of units, things like that.
Okay. All right, I'll open a public hearing if you would like to address the, um, commission. If so, you can name an address. All right, seeing no public hearing, I would like to close the public hearing. All right, any more discussion?
Well, I mean, I, I think it's a fairly reasonable request. I mean, given the fact that they've been trying to work with somebody for a couple of years, get the tenant in there and has had a difficult time, I think it's probably pretty clear, at least to me, that it meets the second standard for rezoning. And, you know, to Mr. Keller's point, B one's probably the most appropriate zoning classification there, it just doesn't match up with anything. It's al, it's almost like the entire corner should have already been B one and isn't. So maybe this is the first step in reclassifying that area towards what it should be, which we might do at some near point when we do a master plan review.
Right.
So I, I think that's pretty reasonable, uh, but, you know, the fence is in very poor condition. It's not being maintained, the parking lot's not striped. Um, I've never been inside it, but I know people who have who said the interior is in very poor condition. But that's all gonna be taken care of as part of the site plan inspection, the site plan review, the new use. Um, which, you know, we're just adding, what'd you say, five new uses?
Five, five new uses, yeah.
Again, I, I'm not local, but I like to walk down to the corner store and get myself, you know, a banana, a soda, and that's my lunch. I think there's a bit of a food desert over on that side of town. Maybe a little convenience store might work out there. But, uh, yeah, that's my, my thing. I think it's a fairly reasonable request under the second standard. I'd like to hear other people's opinions.
Agree that the fence appears to be in disrepair. We're not sure if it's on their property or the neighbor's residential property. Might be on the neighbor's residential, but it is absolutely in disrepair.
I agree with, uh, city manager Warren.
I know, I mean, I own a house on North Saginaw Street, right down the road and that seems like it's always had a hard time keeping a tenant in that building, so, you know.
Gosh, some other issue, not to interrupt, I apologize, but some of the issues, I think that, you know, if someone's here from the company that owns that, um, I don't know whether this is appropriate, but I'm gonna say it. Um, I've looked up Michigan Saks Fender Registry, that is routinely the address for people on that list. So, you know, if you're trying to open business and there's some beautification needs to go on there, but I think that needs to be considered as well. That's a neighborhood, right? So I've noticed this over the last ten years because I check it periodically and quite a few names come back to that address. It's concerning, so just my thoughts on it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I'm only taking chance, you know, to see how things go in that area. I don't think it's gonna hurt anything. But that, that building does need some work.
I, I think the message is that we're gonna be much harsher when it comes to site plan review or zoning permit than we are being brought out.
Yeah.
Um, cause, you know, I think the collective thought up here is, yeah, we need to try something different because it's had a hard time maintaining, uh, somebody in there. But, uh, I think there's some well-taken points up here, it's not being maintained, it's not, you know, not attracting the people that they want, not because of the zoning, but because of the, uh, uh, cause the other use of the property.
All right, any more discussion? Oh, I, I, did you, well, I opened up for public, or?
She opened it and closed it, there were no comments.
Well, but I could address some of the things you guys just
Yeah, absolutely.
Do I need to come up?
Yeah, yeah.
So what's your name?
Michelle Berkeley.
Okay. Oh, right over here. Yeah, then you're not getting a last name.
Um, yeah, I did just wanna, um, address, um, as far as the fence, that is the neighbor, um, lady's, um, fence there. Um, she did say she was fixing it this year, it looks like it started and stopped it. Um, as far as the hundred and seventy-five thousand that we spent, um, we spent about a hundred grand on the roof alone. Um, about ten grand on furnaces, there are about five furnaces in the building. We did have patchwork done on the parking lot, which they did a terrible job and it looks even worse now. Um, as far as the sex offenders, I cannot explain that, uh, we only have currently
And that may not be the case right now.
Okay, okay.
It's, what I'm saying is, we, I think every one of us would love nothing more than that building to be spruced up a little bit and get people in there. That is definitely a deterrent and if I'm a neighbor, that's a concern.
We do have future plans to make more updates. Um, we did not expect the large price of the roof as well as the Riverview suite. We put about sixty-five thousand just on the ceiling alone, getting it fireproofed and, um, but fire rated, soundproofed and fire rated. So that was a big expense that we were not expecting, but we do plan that when we get the building filled to recover those losses and to continue to make updates. We have also refurbished, um, both apartments, apartment one and two, um, in the building as well as a few of the suites we have redone.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay. This, uh, I would like to, I guess, I can make a motion, right?
Yeah.
Should be able to, yeah. I make a motion to recommend that to the city, where, right here, I'm sorry. I make a motion to the, recommend to the city commission to approve the rezoning of the neighborhood of LaPierre LLC at six oh six North Saginaw Street, PID L twenty dash eighteen dash seven hundred dash zero four zero dash zero zero, from OS one, office service to B one, neighborhood business because it meets, uh, standard two. I'm there with standard two, in section, uh, seven dot two, three dot oh six, for approval of rezoning.
Support.
Got motion and support, any discussion?
Could you read those numbers again?
Yes, yes, one, you want me to do them one by one?
Very slowly. No, that's fine.
I got a motion and support, any discussion? Uh, seeing none, I will vote with an eye, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Thank you very much for addressing that property. All right, and now we go to site plans. We have a lot of them on the list, so we're gonna go to none. All right, other business, site plan extension at urgent design, or I'm sorry, it's urgent design addition, not at. Thirty-one, twenty-one, John Conley.
Yes, so real quick, right, no site plan, but we do have a site plan approval extension tonight.
Yes.
Three dimensional services group is the current occupant urgent design and manufacturing plant, uh, which is currently located at three, one, two, three, John Conley Drive. And this site plan was for a planned sixty-eight thousand square foot addition. So here, you probably remember, is the approved site plan that we worked on last summer. And real quick summary, um, here we have proposed paving work around the building and then here is the proposed expansion. And then this is currently active, currently active, existing building, manufacturing space, active parking area. Um, those are the two real major site, site improvement highlights that I took from the site plan today was this proposed addition and all of this new, um, paving work surrounding the building. So as we just discussed, this site plan received approval on August eighth of two thousand twenty-four, existing fifty-five thousand square foot industrial building and then a proposed addition with the site plan. Zoning ordinance section seven, eighteen oh six allows for the planning commission to authorize one extension of the time limit for a site plan approval of up to one additional year. The extension shall be based on evidence from the applicant that the development has a likelihood of commencing construction within the extension period. I think the applicant is here tonight, but the comment that we received from the applicant when we asked them if they wanted to seek an extension was that we certainly want to request a site plan extension and will proceed with that addition. The delays have been a function of multiple customer programs getting delayed. Based on the information provided, staff recommends approval of the requested one-year site plan extension for the urgent design site plan located at three, one, two, three, John Conley Drive. Happy to answer any questions as you all deliberate and I think the applicant's ready to speak as well.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Um, site plans are pretty straightforward, if you have some comment, we can do it, or we have any questions, uh, for the extension?
Got a question. What's going on, man?
Ford Motor Company continues to delay programs. Uh, we're a well diversified business, the aerospace side, uh, necessitates this. If automotive would just kick in a little bit, we're ready to go. Uh, we do see some green shoots in, uh, the automotive forecast, so we're hoping to get this going. I'm hoping to have this kicked off by the end of the year with a builder and start construction in the spring.
This was, this was the sidewalk one.
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
Sidewalk one, that was it?
Yeah, yeah. We got stuck on sidewalks for a while there.
You don't need to get stuck on sidewalks.
Well, it's not often you did a fifty-ish thousand square foot building with a seventy-ish thousand square foot addition, so I'm excited. Fingers crossed, I want to see it happen.
We would love to have it done last year.
I'm sure there's some language, but I'd make a motion to approve the request and extend it for a year.
Ah, yeah, I second.
All right, any discussion? Seeing none, all vote with the eye?
Aye.
All those opposed, seeing none, motion carries. Hopefully that project goes.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then our other section is our text amendments, various sections of the zoning ordinance in front of us.
So I took all of our detailed comments from last month on our topics and now I have executed some amendments for our review. So the hope is tonight that if we're pretty close, um, on the sentiment that you all would like to see with these amendments and what we've actually got so far, um, that we would set a public hearing to then occur at the next planning commission meeting in September. Um, so we can keep these text amendments moving along. along. So, we can, I wanna encourage us, if there are a handful of changes to be made that are, you know, small in nature, I would say, small, minor changes to what we've currently got, we can still set the public hearing. I'll make those changes. I'll present those changes next month. But I would like to think that we're pretty close on what we've got in front of us, but I know that we'll probably have some changes tonight as well. So, the first, first few amendments that I'm gonna talk us through are actually on the third page of your amendment section in the packets. Standard, first standard, which is letter C, overlapping landscaping requirements. So, we say, where multiple landscaping requirements apply to the same site, for example, parking lot landscaping and buffer yards. The required trees and shrubs may be used to satisfy more than one requirement, provided all quantitative and design standards are met. Plant materials must be appropriately located to fulfill the functional intent of each applicable landscaping section. So, that's where I really like, you know, they can use trees that kind of double up with their buffer yard and their parking lot landscaping requirement, but the, the intent of the buffer provision still has to be satisfied with where they choose to place their landscaping. Then the next one that we've got on the sheet is for landscaping waivers. So, we say, an applicant may request a landscaping waiver from the planning commission of up to fifty percent from no more than two landscaping requirements upon demonstrating compliance with two or more of the following points. All waivers must be submitted along with the required landscaping plan. So, we wouldn't just get, you know, a waiver. We get a waiver included kind of with a site plan request, where we then have a detailed landscaping sheet to kind of pick and prod at. So, the waiver requirements here, so currently I've got it drafted as an applicant must meet two or more of these four standards. The first standard being site constraints, such as lock configuration, existing site footprint, limiting the planting area, utility easements, or just a general impracticality of the required standard. And then number two to meet, satisfy for a waiver, is that an applicant may propose alternative site design features, such as, but not limited to, architectural enhancements or green infrastructure. I don't exactly know what that, you know, I know of a handful of examples of what green infrastructure could be, but I like this one, because maybe we'll see some stuff that we don't already see in, you know, traditional building design right now, to get out of some landscaping requirements. Third, the proposed reduction will not negatively impact adjacent properties, public right-of-way, or the overall character of the site and surrounding area. But once again, that's kind of, you know, speaking to the buffer, buffer stuff, right? If buffers, buffer requirements are not satisfied, then it'll be challenging to get this landscaping waiver granted. And then number four, the remaining proposed landscaping is designed to meet the intent and purpose of this ordinance. But when applicant would have to meet two or more of those points to be granted a landscaping waiver.
So.
Yeah, no worries.
Number one, though?
Yeah.
It's impracticality, not impartiality?
Okay. Yeah, I do see that typo. Thank you. Yeah, that's wrong. Yeah.
It's saying that you gotta meet two of those four points?
Mm-hmm.
So, let's say, number three, the proposed reduction will not negatively impact the adjacent properties. Are we saying if they meet one of the other three points, that it can negatively impact adjacent properties?
So, I, I, yeah, that's a good point. Three and four are similar, so I, you know, I, that's a good point.
And then not to, and I understand why you did this.
Mm-hmm.
But in the top, subpart D, they allow a waiver of up to fifty percent of no more than two. I know why you did that, but I also don't like limiting the board. Now, I suspect the reason, okay, I shouldn't say that, sorry. I suspect I know why you did that. Because when we get applicants who come in and we have a provision that says, well, the board can waive requirements, they're just gonna waive it down to nothing. And then say, well, if you want me here, you gotta waive all these things. At least this way, we say, look, there's some waiving that can go on, but not everything. But I also don't like waiving the city, the planning commission. I mean, I think we're gonna be in a best position to understand whether, having three bushes versus two bushes is just overkill. So, I just didn't know fifty percent and two landscaping was a little bit too much tying our hands.
Yeah, I was thinking exactly what you said there. Right, that I think, like we talked about last month, if we allow for larger than fifty percent, and we allow for more than two, exactly like you said, people are gonna come in and request everything to be gone. So, that was kind of my fear. But I understand that sentiment as well.
I think we just need to kind of look at the language a little bit more.
Mm-hmm, okay. Do we, do we like this kind of, you know, format of four standards, and then two of them have to be met, or do we maybe wanna point me to shrink it down to maybe one or two standards, and then just say, you know, one of these has to be met?
Reduce the percentage?
Or reduce the percentage? What would we think about those options?
What would the percentage go to, then?
Is that a read?
Yeah.
Ben, where did this language come from?
This was somewhat me, and somewhat, I didn't, I did not, I mean, I know, I have seen landscaping waivers, but this was one that I didn't really pull from an example. I kind of just put it together myself.
Could you pull an example or two?
Mm-hmm.
Just 'cause I, I had a landscaping waiver in my previous community, and it just.
This feels a little clunky.
Yeah, okay.
I just wonder if it's been polished somewhere else, and we just kind of fix it a little bit.
That's a great idea.
See your example. No, I'm not saying mine was right.
Yeah, no, not at all. But just another good example as a point of reference.
Every time I read an ordinance, I'll read three or four other ordinances.
Right. There's no reason to read them. We'll, when somebody's already done it for us.
Yep.
So, okay, we'll give a little bit more attention to that. I've got some direction to move forward with that. Okay, the next one should be a little bit more straightforward. This is our replacing of trees standards. So, now, instead of this strange calculation that talks about measuring the size of the tree and then replacing at a rate of fifty percent, we say, removed trees must be replaced with a one-to-one ratio. When one tree is removed, one tree must be replanted. The applicant must demonstrate what the existing caliber size of trees to be removed is before removal. Trees must be replanted at the same caliber size of the removed once full growth maturity is reached. This should not be same. I should probably put it to similar, because that's almost impossible, I'd have to get perfect, you know, caliber size replacements.
Caliper.
Caliper.
No, it's caliber in one place and caliper in the other.
Is it really?
Yeah. Yeah, should be a P.
Should be a P, not a B. Right. Oh, yeah, there it is.
I was on vacation.
I want everybody to recognize that I can see that B for.
Right. One has a tail and one has a hat. Trees planted that are replacing removed trees described above must be replanted as the same or similar tree species that was removed. But then the next one, number three, when prohibited trees are shown, as shown on table seven fifteen four, are discovered on site, that's our list of prohibited landscaping materials, and planned for removal, they shall be replaced with recommended plant materials as shown in table seven fifteen thirteen. I know there was a discussion point last meeting, if you find a prohibited tree.
I have, I think I have a strange question for you. I'm just trying to understand this. I'm not all that interested in trees.
Yeah.
Popeyes, they tore down some big trees.
Mm-hmm.
So, this rule states that they have to put trees that are gonna grow to that same size somewhere on that property, is what that means?
Mm-hmm.
It's already approved.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, but I definitely need to change that one that talks about it's gonna be the same exact size of tree.
This is not applied to Popeyes.
Oh, yeah, this, right, this one would not, this would not apply. This new language does not apply to the Popeyes site. Our old language does.
Why does the new language not apply?
Because it was at the, it was, yeah, it was at the time of site plan approval.
Oh, just sort of timing of the.
Exactly. Yeah, this new language, once, once this made it through, this would apply to any site that came through after it was approved.
I have a question.
Yeah.
About the prohibited trees. Do we, do we always require that they're removed? Because it's, like, the way it's worded, I wasn't sure. This says, if they're discovered and if it's planned that they're going to be removed, then they have to be replaced with the recommended. So, if it's not planned, are they supposed to remove it anyway? Is that?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Because then it would, it's kind of like the legal non-conformity that we talked about with the apartments upstairs, right? Maybe they planted those trees and they grew maturity before we adopted the ordinance standard that said that that tree was prohibited. So, yeah.
Well, with those changes.
With those changes, yeah, absolutely. Okay, now, waste receptacles. These are two pretty easy ones. This one is overly wordy, and I put this totally in a factor of Kim not being around. When multi-tenant buildings or properties exist, waste receptacles may be shared between tenants so long as a signed agreement is submitted to the planning department. The owner and lesee of the waste receptacle shall be specified on the agreement, along with a statement describing the expected trash production of all tenants to utilize the waste receptacle, and how the proposed trash capacity will meet the needs of expected trash production. So, overly wordy, but I think most of that language in there is important to have. Talks about, you know, submitting, you know, a brief discussion that talks about how much trash would be produced by each tenant, and then a justification that's, you know, based on that, this is how they grimaceize the dumpster.
And, Ken, we just cut up Metal Man and say, there's a statement that says the trash produced will be sufficiently.
Only you can say it.
Yeah, I didn't like that.
Yeah, that's the person Kim said to me this morning. And the next one on this page, we've talked about this a lot.
We gotta, I guess, another question.
Yeah, oh, sorry about that.
That's okay. There's comments. Still, I brought it up last meeting. I'd still like to see us have a requirement for off-site enclosures.
What do you mean off-site enclosure?
Like, ones across city parking lots from the site, to have identification to whose enclosure that is.
Yeah.
Well, if it's a cit, in, are you talking about in the city parking lot?
Yeah.
So, as part of the redevelopment of the parking lot number nine, we're gonna put in X number of enclosures, and I don't know how we're gonna do it, either rent it back to them or something, but that's the maximum we're gonna allow. We're not gonna allow any dumpsters outside of the enclosures. So, there's probably gonna be an agreement between the city and whichever business. We'll know whose dumpster it is.
Okay.
But I guess my question on this one is, it's, maybe it's not this section, but do we have a requirement that there be dumpsters inside enclosures? Because that's probably my number one pet peeve in the entire city, is I do not like enclosure, dumpsters, not enclosures.
Who, who's responsible for the enforcement of that?
Well, depends on what you mean by enforcement.
Okay, so I'll give you an example, because I noticed it yesterday. The gas station just down on twenty-four past the tracks to the right, they have a nice enclosure, and they have their dumpster in there, and then the Jiffy Lube or whatever that is next to it. Their enclosure is completely, like, it's junk, but the dumpster is sitting outside of it in front of it. So, you have a good, good faith customer on one side doing the right thing, but then you have someone right next to them that literally is not following any of the, kind of, rules of the game. I mean, it's not life or death, but nonetheless, if we're making decisions and then they're not held accountable for, we're really not making decisions. So, I wonder who is responsible?
For that building?
I consider that question is not appropriate for a planning commission meeting.
Oh, I'll ask you post.
Sure.
Good guess.
Doug's comment was poking around. Why not have a clause in here requiring maintenance? For example, I found City of Dearborn Heights, there's a clause, just read it real quick. The dumpster and/or trash container, the screening enclosure, and the surrounding ground area shall be maintained in a neat and orderly appearance, free of rubbish, wastepaper, and other debris. This shall be the responsibility and duty of the owner and/or less see of the parcels on which the dumpster and/or trash container is located, to maintain the dumpster and/or trash containers and the ornamental screenings, so as not to create a light condition or an eyesore to the surrounding neighborhoods. This Dearborn Heights, section thirty-six, two fifty-three, seven.
I mean, pretty much every ordinance I've ever read has some kind of maintenance requirement in it. I'm looking at nine dash twelve, it's not great, but shall dispose of garbage and rubbish in a clean and sanitary manner by placing a rubbish facility provided by the owner. All such rubbish and garbage containers shall be leak-proof with a lid. So, there's probably language in there, but you're point well taken. Obviously, from an enforcement point of view, there's often disagreements about what the word maintenance means. But again, probably not a discussion for a planning commission meeting. But from a language perspective, yes, we should probably have something in there if it's not already.
I agree. I would, my first thought just becomes, if we can't get people to put their dumpsters inside of the enclosures, I think it's gonna be even harder to enforce maintenance. But I still think we should have a provision so we can kind of have it in our tool chest.
Yeah. I agree as well.
Okay, and then next one on the sheet is screening of mechanical equipment, specifically roof-mounted equipment. So, we say, for roof-mounted equipment, when it's visible from the right-of-way or from a residential use, roof-mounted equipment must be screened from view. A solid wall or other architectural feature shall be utilized for the screening. I bet that most of the time, we will see architectural features put up there for some sort of screening rather than a solid wall. Okay, now, on to our sixteen, which is our parking article. So, we are proposing a parking requirement waiver. This one, I think, is a little bit sharper than the landscaping waiver from a previous slide here. So, an applicant may request a waiver from the planning commission of up to fifty percent of the minimum required off-street parking spaces upon demonstrating compliance with the following points. So, both, both must be satisfied here. Site constraints limit the amount of parking that could be installed on site, and a parking demand analysis or similar evidence shows that the proposed uses will not require the full number of parking spaces that are required initially. Fifty percent might be a little bit too deep to cut through. I had a nice conversation with Kim this morning, where we talked about some grow facilities that were approved, new builds, and those grow facilities, you know, were not required to have too much parking. We had a parking standard that kind of revolved around maximum number of employees at these grow facilities, and when the applicants would come in, they'd say, well, we only have three or we only have five employees that are gonna work. And then a few of these grow facilities have now gone out, and the sites are lacking parking for new tenants that are occupying the sites.
Well, but is it the original owner's obligation to put in additional parking for some future tenants?
Right. No, absolutely not.
We did amend it to require ten plus. We already did one amendment to that.
So, is this a parking deferral waiver? Like, okay, you don't have to put it in now, but you at least have to maintain the space for it at some point in the future?
So, then, I'll speak to that too. No, I'm proposing that we delete this current parking deferment section that has all that language in there that talks about, you know, the space must be left, and kind of, you know, planned for parking if needed, and then the planning commission could require that that parking be installed. No, I'm not proposing any of that. I'm proposing a clean, you know, if this waiver is granted, then parking is not required on site here.
Well, because there could be an awful lot of pressure from the local, you know, friend of the planning commission, who's gonna come in and say, I wanna put my use in this location, and yes, I understand that there's only three parking spaces. who's gonna come in and say, I wanna put my use in this location and yes, I understand that there's only three parking spaces, but I'm only gonna have three people, right? Then the day they open, there's five hundred people there, of course. And I had that in my previous community. And both of the uses on either side were screaming at us bloody murder because we approved of the use and everybody was parked in their parking lots. Cause they had like three parking spaces.
Sure, yeah.
So, okay, your use is gonna require twenty parking spaces, you swear it's only gonna be three. Where are those people gonna park if you actually end up needing twenty? I don't want it to be at the next door neighbor's property, cause then I get dealt with that. So I, I like deferrals. You know, it's, it's, it's a way of saying, look, okay, maybe you're right, maybe you don't actually need that many, but if you do,
If you do.
where, where are they gonna go back?
Yes, Commissioner Patterson.
Can we put something in that where we're, okay, you can develop ten parking sites, but if you might have twenty employees, you also have to have land for parking lot. You know, land for parking for this building that size?
You mean like off-site parking?
No, or just onsite? If your to-, your site will allow you to in the future expand the parking?
Oh, that's what deferrals.
Okay.
Yeah. And deferral is saying, you're saying you only have ten, ten employees. The standards require twenty. So we're not gonna tell you to put in twenty, but you have to save the space for the twenty.
Yeah, I see it slid into the slot when you said, thanks.
My thought from the last meeting was that our intent was a little bit of the opposite of what we just discussed. That we wanted to maybe move away from the deferment and move towards a waiver. So are we saying that we might wanna go back to some of this language in the parking deferrals? So I'll just read some of this. So this is the current language that we've got in here that I was proposing to remove. We can absolutely keep some of it if we want. A smaller amount of parking may be approved by a finding by the planning commission that the required amount of parking is excessive, provided that the area to meet the full parking requirement is retained as open space. The site plan shall note the area where parking is being deferred with a dotted parking lot layout. If within a two-year period following issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the planning commission determines, based on an observed use, that the deferred parking is needed, then the parking shall be constructed by the applicant within six months of being informed. The planning commission may require posting of a performance bond to cover the estimated construction cost of the deferred parking with a refund in two years if the additional parking is not found to be necessary.
There was, so there was a commercial on TV a couple of years ago with a little Mexican girl who was like soft taco, hard taco, and she says, why not both? Is there a reason we come out, we can't have both?
I think we could have both.
I mean, it gives us another tool in our quiver. I, I can't think of a circumstance in particular where one would be more appropriate than the other, but I don't see why we need to limit ourselves.
So the planning commission could kind of choose whether they wanted to issue, I mean, I guess it kind of depends on what's applied for.
Well, yeah, what they asked for. Or what our planning consultant recommends.
And maybe if we're unhappy with them requesting a waiver, we would say no to their waiver, but maybe encourage them for a deferment instead, something like that.
Well, I mean, so, you know, you've got a one acre parcel and they wanna, and this is all just made up numbers, obviously, but they wanna use three-quarters of the parcel for a building and have a tiny little parking space. Well, maybe we say, look, you don't need all that building space, cause in the future, you might need more parking spaces. I, I just think there's, I'd rather have the tools in my, my bag than not have both.
So sort of get the handle on the situation, like in rezoning?
I don't see why not. I mean, they're both options. It would be, you know, the tenants and the planning consultant bring us what they think is the best option. And, you know, we are the locals who understand what is probably appropriate in that space to be in.
I like it. I don't see why we can't accomplish that. Okay, and then one typo I've gotten here that I'll say before I read off the standard, oh, I just skipped a page. Instead of restriping here, this should say resurfacing. So full compliance with city, with current city standards at the time of resurfacing. That's gonna be the headline for the section. And then anytime a parking lot is resurfaced, it must come into full compliance with all standards within this ordinance. Specifically, that's gonna be a nice note to hang our hats on for the double lines for everything in the city.
Yes, Mr. Commissioner Allen.
So we also wanna keep EA in there, the parking deferment, a smaller amount of parking?
So that is actually the same, it's the same example. I just moved it around because initially I was thinking that we were just gonna move, I proposed that we were gonna move the parking deferment section up in the section because I thought it was hidden, but so now just based on, yeah, it's shown and deleted twice, but.
Right, alright, yeah, thank you.
Good catch.
Okay, signs, these sign ones are very straightforward. So this is, this one specifically for our temporary sign section. Damage signs, any temporary sign found by the building official to be in a torn, damaged, in an unsafe condition, or not properly maintained shall be removed by the owner within three days after receipt of notice to do so from the building official. Yeah, it's straightforward.
Ben, does it have to be building official?
Could be anybody we choose.
I actually beat the city a war in a couple of times because our ordinance said it had to be done by a police officer and it wasn't a police officer that did it.
Sure. Maybe just-
City official?
City official or, yeah?
Authorized city official.
Authorized city official, nice, okay.
Kim, you're gonna be out there on the sign group.
Yeah.
Okay, flip a page or two more in your packets and we get to the page that has wall sign. Wall sign, awnings and canopy signs. I'm sorry, this is not in color on the screen, but it is in color in your packets. So for wall signs, maximum area. Our proposed change is to lead in here, the word lesser, changing it to greater, and then we're changing this, uh, three square feet for each lineal feet of building front edge to one point five square feet for each lineal feet of building front edge. So I'll read the whole standard. Wall sign maximum area. The total surface area of all wall signs placed on the front, side or rear of a building shall not exceed the greater of ten percent of the area of the front face of the building or tenant's base, or one point five square feet for each lineal feet of building front edge or tenant's base. Just about exactly what we talked about last month. I don't think it's gonna be too much of a change. I think it's gonna slightly increase the amount of signage that properties are allowed. I've got another standard in a page or two that speaks to a cap, though, on wall sign size for any property. It says that any property may not exceed a hundred and twenty-five square feet of wall signage, but some properties will be eligible to request an additional fifty feet for building setback or large front face, like we talked about last month.
So what, what's the current standard?
The current standard is pick the lesser of the two. First one being ten percent of building front face-
Or tenant's space.
Or tenant's base, or three square feet for each lineal feet of building front edge. And what we're finding is this three square feet for each lineal feet of building front edge is never the selection, is never the one that falls in, because this, this ten percent of front face area is always lower. And that's where we have the lesser, then we're swapping to greater.
Do we have any kind of example numbers of signage, square footage on the buildings in downtown that we know is right with? Yeah, I think the signage is on from your building versus your front facade, right?
I don't remember that.
I mean, they'll probably, at least increase it a little bit.
Right.
You're, you're, you're probably under.
Yeah, we're under.
Well, Mr. Cullen, I know this isn't, we haven't got there yet, or it's not listed, but as I walk through the downtown, one of the things I'd like to see more of is the signs that kind of stick out from the building.
Yeah, projecting.
Yeah. Is that permitted? Is that something that's suppressed?
It is, it is permitted, but I'm not sure of the area we allow. That is on, so we've got two pages in your packet for schedule of sign regulations. And then on the second, second page of the sign table, schedule of sign regulations, we've got projecting signs. Currently, we allow for eight square feet per side, pretty small. It must be higher than the wall, must not be higher than the wall upon which it is attached and the bottom of the sign must be eight feet above the ground. And they're only permitted in central business district zoning districts, one per business. Not within twenty feet of another projecting sign.
I wouldn't mind hearing some other commissioner's thoughts on that. I know the DDA director and I talked about it, he would like to encourage more businesses to take that approach.
I'm not following, is it gonna be so you can read it from?
Yeah, so if you're, if you're walking down the sidewalk, it'll be perpendicular to you hanging from, you know, a post that comes out from the front of the building. And not necessarily have to rush into a headlong, maybe we need to see some examples.
Yeah.
You know, eight square feet's very small.
I think it's very small.
It's very small.
Too small.
Commissioner Patterson?
Okay, it's also very small and I can smack eight feet.
Yeah, sure, you can touch eight feet.
With your head?
Yeah.
I have worked some very old jibs.
Do we like twelve better than eight, or?
I think if we go higher.
Yeah.
Perhaps, I mean, it's an older downtown district. Bring it down a couple of feet from the floor, first floor level.
Another thing for us to consider is, oh, I forget what they call them, like box signs, where they got that real thin plastic crap on either side. Those tend to fall apart and look cheap, in my opinion. There's a couple of like wooden two-sided or metal two-sided signs, I think should class it up a little bit. But again, I, I think we probably need to just do a little bit more research on that.
Yeah, so we should have some really good examples from other downtowns across the state, but we could totally do a material requirement for these, you know. So all, a lot of regulations within the schedule of sign regulations table, but then right after the table, we've got additional provisions to the schedule of sign regulations. So like, we've got five additional standards for wall signs. And one of those standards for wall signs talks about material, materials required. So we could absolutely do a material required for projecting signs too.
We should probably put you in touch with Mr. Hall, you guys-
Absolutely, what you talk about.
Yeah.
I'm glad to hear that, this is a topic he's interested in. Okay, so we got through wall signs, awnings and canopies. This is primarily for those gas station signs. We, then we've talked about them, we've had several variance requests for over the last two years, some of them being very silly. So awnings and canopy signage, individual letters shall not be larger than, formerly we had fifteen inches from top to bottom and last month, we agreed that we were gonna increase that to twenty-four inches from top to bottom. From my review of canopy signs at gas stations, marathons, speedway, twenty-four inches should be more than satisfactory for what they're looking for.
Talked about that one a lot.
Yeah. Okay, monument signs, this one's very simple, simple request from our building department. They asked us if we could include the base in the total sign height. So formerly applicants were not measuring the little base of the sign that might stick up a foot or eighteen inches from the ground. They were only measuring the height that was kind of built on top of that. Not too sure how they were getting away with that. But now, which very clearly reads eight feet maximum height for monument signs and the measurement shall include the base in the total sign height.
So considering we don't allow pole signs anymore, is eight feet tall enough?
Most communities that I've seen examples of this for go to twelve.
Go to twelve?
Yeah. I've seen ten, I've seen twelve.
We allow a ten in Cedar. And then the next thing is, and it's almost a little funny, but maybe you say you can have a two-foot base and then an eight-foot sign, so they're end up getting what they want? Cause you know how these businesses are, they want every inch they can get. Cause I think the bigger the sign, magically people will come into their business. I just think eight feet's a little short.
So you're saying like a max of a two-foot base and a total of a ten-foot off-top? Ten foot?
Throw an idea in there.
No, I got you, I'm with you, I get, I hear you.
Conversely, though, if we go to ten feet, do we need to increase the square footage? Otherwise, we're gonna have a little bit of tall, narrow.
What is this square footage? It's fifty-six per side.
Per side.
Oh, really?
Twelve total. So that's gonna-
Well, if you do the math, it's seven foot times eight foot.
Times eight wide, yeah.
So if we go-
Fifty-six.
Yeah.
So Ben, when we redid the signs for Vincent Cedar, I literally went out and measured the signs that run down the street so that when you drive past it, you're like, oh, I really like that whatever sign. How big is it? I don't know. Well, Ben went out and-
Go measure.
Yeah.
Right. Understand what these ones actually look like.
So I, I think because very few people, few people get up and close personal with signage, I don't think they realize how big signs are, what small signs are. So if we could do maybe some measurement?
Yeah, sure. I think it's great. We've got a lot of great wall, or monument signs in the city, so I think that's a great idea. And I think it's a great idea to increase the height and the area too, because we want more monument signs, you know, as opposed to other signs. So let's encourage monument signs to be a little larger.
We don't want more of those Arby's signs?
Fortunately not, so I hear.
It's a landmark. Were you about to?
What about businesses that want a new sign, but they don't want an eight foot? Or they don't need an eight foot?
They go, they go up, they have the option to go, that's how they can go.
Yeah, right, those are maximums. They can be anywhere.
Oh, so they can be anywhere between there?
Exactly, yeah.
Smack it back to the head, would you?
What about a business that, I mean, you stuff that out there, I think it could create a, a site problem.
We do have some standards that talk like clear vision triangles, you know, and intersections that say like you can't have any, any landscaping or any impediment to view in a certain triangle at an intersection. We do have a few of those that kind of like regulate traffic safety in those instances.
There's, there's frontage that will not accommodate that when you got a sidewalk out there too. I don't see, I don't see why you can't have a sign on a post. Wouldn't we allow those?
Yeah, I think, I, I think that's an issue that's been done, gone, yeah.
Nineteen eighty.
I think Matt might have been back here.
What I remember, it was significantly a time ago.
Yeah, Marty, I think Matt was here when that was changed, yeah.
Wow.
So for what it's worth, same thing at Cedar, they allowed them for a while, then they stopped for about ten years and then we rewrote it and we allowed them again. So it's possible, but you've got a good point. One of them is, so first of all, all signage has to be off the right-of-way.
Right.
So it's gotta be at least that far off the driveway. But if we're trying to make this pedestrian-friendly city, we've got, you know, active sidewalks and people trying to walk over them. I don't want cars pulling out and not being able to see, you know, bicycles coming because the sign's blocking the vision there too. So I know with the clear vision triangles, it's like goofy language. You can't have any blocking between two foot, four foot off the ground to, you know, where you can see through or see past. I feel like we're giving you a lot of work here, Ben.
It's good, we're getting really specific, so that's all I need. We probably should not set a public area next month due to these changes in Miami. But we can talk about them more at the very end, we're almost done here. Window signage, so formerly we had not more than twenty-five percent of the surface of the window must be taken up by window signage. I think we agreed upon this last month that we wanna make this an A for maximum area, but with the provision that all entry doors shall remain clear of all signs for public safety purposes.
Yeah, I strongly believe in this.
Yeah, I think so too. Okay, and then here's my other wall sign standard to kind of tie us back to that new calculation we've got. So this is additional provisions for the schedule of sign regulations for wall signs. And then we've got this new standard that says wall sign area allowed. No single business shall be allowed more than one hundred and twenty-five square feet of wall signage. When one of the following conditions are met, an applicant may appeal for an additional fifty square feet of wall signage. The first of those two conditions being that the primary structure is setback more than two hundred feet from the front lot line. I did measure a fair amount of our larger commercial stores on Google Maps and saw that this was generally about how far they were setback from city right-of-way. And so I got the two hundred feet. And then primary structure front face is greater than thirteen hundred square feet. I got this thirteen hundred square feet because currently, we take front face and we multiply that by ten percent and then that gives us our allowed, you know, number of maximum area for wall signage. So if one was to do thirteen hundred square feet- So if one was to do thirteen hundred square feet times ten percent, they would get to one hundred and thirty square feet of wall signage. So if your front face is larger than what would currently allow for a hundred and thirty square feet of wall signage, then that is an avenue to appeal for an additional fifty square feet of wall signage.
You mean CVA?
Um.
What do you mean by appeal?
Yeah, right. I was thinking that that would just be something that could be done administratively in the sign permit process. So I don't think appeal is the right word, yeah. May apply, right, may apply for an additional fifty square feet of wall signage.
Are there any standards for approval? Cause it seems like if they meet those two requirements, they will be approved.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I was thinking, it's just if they met one of those two requirements, then they will be approved. That's how I've seen it done in other examples, is just a very flat, if you're building a setback further, you're allowed this much more wall signage. If it's setback even further, you're allowed more, you're allowed more. So this isn't really a, um, review process, it's kind of just like a matter of fact.
Um, just from a pragmatic point of view, you said that, you know, you looked at Google Maps and you saw a lot of the bigger stores were two hundred feet up.
Mm-hmm.
Um, when you say two hundred, do you mean two oh five or one ninety-five or? Yeah, I'm, I'm half joking.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
If they're all at one ninety-five to two oh five, should we make that standard one seventy-five?
Maybe we should make it one seventy-five.
Cause it's not a close call.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're right. And I, right, one seventy-five, two hundred feet from the lot line, you're splitting hairs. No one can tell that difference between when they're driving on the road, so I think one seventy-five is fine.
I'm not trying to dampen the conversation.
No, not at all.
So if anyone has contrary thought, then I want to hear them, I just.
And these, you know, there's, there's a lot of different ways to skin this cap for wall sign area allowed. You know, there's a lot, I've seen lots of provisions that are different in, you know, different communities, so I think we just need to choose a few and.
So Ben, here's a question, so Meyer is a great example. You got Meyer and the drive that kind of fronts on the Meyer is like a service drive.
Yeah, service drive, yeah.
Uh, the bigger road is actually along the side of the building.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, is there, is there a sign of any kind on that side of the building? And is it permissible? Cause I think that's where the greenhouse areas, maybe it's not.
Or pharmacy drive through or something.
Yeah, so maybe it's not great for signage, but, um, again, this is just my, my philosophy. More signage is good, um, for these businesses. And if they've got two huge sides of the building that both run along a, a road.
Mm-hmm.
Are they allowed to have two large signs along either road?
They are, and that's kind of the beauty of our wall sign standard is we don't have a cap on quantity or location. We just have a cap on square footage, so you can spread them out wherever you want.
Is it square footage per facade or square footage per building?
Say that for me one more time.
Is it square footage of signage per building or per wall?
Per building, front sides or rear.
So you could have four signs and they all have to be twenty-five square feet, cause the total maximum is a hundred?
You're exactly right, yeah.
We did it per wall in Cedar.
Mm-hmm. Uh, a cap on the amount of square footage that could go on each wall, or?
Yeah, so it was the same standard as before, where you could have one foot per running linear foot or ten percent up front beside. But it was per wall.
Wow, okay, yeah.
I mean, if you have two kind of main parts of your building, I think that would encourage the businesses to want to make that side of the building look nicer too, because they're gonna put their sign on it. Again, I'm hoping for contrary point, I'm just saying.
That makes sense.
And for trying to encourage our businesses, I think this makes sense for them too.
Mm-hmm, more flexibility in signage. And like, like I said previously, like if we're allowing wall signs, then I think that we should give more flexibility for wall signs and for money signs.
And you know what, wall signs are not cheap. Anyone who's got a business knows that. Especially those big signs.
Uh, next one, another pretty simple one, I hope, is removal of sign copy following business closure. So we talked about last month, maybe not, you know, enforcing this standard every single time it occurs, but wanting to have this, another one in our tool chest. So within one year of business closure, sign contents must be removed from all sign cabinets or sign structures as determined by the building official, but the sign structures may remain. I think we might want to change building official to authorize city official. So all of us can do this.
Um, so another potential issue is removal of the sign. So I don't think there's anything worse than driving down the street and seeing a, a, like I said, if we've got a box sign we have to. And all you're seeing is the interior lights. I think that looks like a ghetto.
Mm-hmm, yeah, brand design, yeah.
I don't know if you can say something like, uh, shall be replaced with sign blank or something like that.
Okay.
Cause I'd rather it's a, you know, tenant space, you know, for rent.
For sale.
Yeah. Cause I think it just looks unmaintained, it looks like it's a, what's the word? Broken glass theory.
Mm-hmm.
Really drags down the area.
I'll have to choose some careful wording, so we're not violating Reed versus Gilbert by, you know, saying what we want in there uh, when it comes down, but I think we can find something.
I'm sure there's some other options out there, we can look and see what the language says.
Uh-huh. Yeah, right, we just want to ensure that they're not blank cases. This is the last one, I believe. Uh, and this is for us with the zoning permits. So currently, standards for permit issuance, for a zoning permit issuance. A zoning permit shall be issued by the planning department or building official whenever the proposed use of land, letter A, complies with all, complies with the provisions of this chapter, or all of the provisions of this chapter. Uh, and we'd like to add language that says commonly checked items during zoning permit reviews consist of, but are not limited to, compliance with parking lot construction and maintenance requirements and compliance with waste receptacle compliance. So like I said, for the River View Professional Building, um, this is the point in time where we get an opportunity to bring them into compliance with some, uh, site development requirements. And I'm dying to have this language in there, because oftentimes, we've had, a lot of times, we have zoning permits come in and we identify issues on the site, and we've had a few of those that have turned into like multi-year battles with people trying to, you know, they put up an escrow or some sort of bond that says, we don't want to fix the parking lot right now, but we need occupancy, so we'll give you whatever you want for a bond, you know, just give us occupancy with the zoning permit. And now we have a few of them that have been years gone on and now we're about to cash in a few bonds potentially to maybe do the work ourselves. Um, but I would like some bit of stronger language so that people know when they're coming in for a zoning permit, hey, we're gonna make sure that your parking lot's up to snuff, and we're gonna make sure that your dumpster has an enclosure. Even though it could already be implied with the current language, right, complies with the provisions of this chapter. We just want to point it out a little bit more clearly.
I think we always want to give our enforcement the more legs to stand on to enforce, right?
Yeah. Well, I mean, those are obviously very important, the parking lot and waste receptacle. But I wonder if we're limiting ourselves by only listing two and, I'm a little concerned about putting that as part of the ordinance versus just saying, the ordinance says shall comply with law provisions. And then the policy with the application process says, here are the things we're gonna look at. Because, you know, uh, there's a million things in the zoning ordinance and I'm not sure we're gonna look at literally every one of them.
We're not, right.
But here are the ones that are super important and we're not gonna let you get away with these.
That's what I would suggest and add it to the zoning permit form.
Yeah, I just don't know if it's ordinance worthy.
There's a few things that are listed on the zoning permit form, we could just add these two specific items to the form.
Okay, yeah. I'd, I'd rather have the ordinance be universal and then narrow down the important stuff by a policy.
Just have these, that, that was a miscommunication for me. I thought that we had to do this before we could put it on the form. But I don't think we have to. I mean, we hit like, like we just talked about, we have that catch-all, complies with the provisions of this chapter. So we could put, there's a current box on the zoning ordinance form that says something like, you know, what other sections does the zoning administrator determine, you know, need to be checked at this point in time? And then I can write any section that I want and then discuss a little blurb about, you know, how is that in compliance or non-compliance uh, based on the applicability of that standard in the current situation. So I think we can write, strike this language, but then we can add some extra checkboxes to our zoning permit application form for these common issues that we're seeing on properties. Okay, so this is not, I, uh, nothing that I didn't expect, I was, you know, this is how tax amendments work. It's the plan, it kind of takes a swing at some things and then we talk about them and a fair amount of revisions to be made. So I would encourage us, let's take one more month. And then in September, we can set a public hearing once it's a little bit more finalized.
If you feel that way, I will agree with you.
Ben, I think you should get it perfect the first time, every time.
Oh, Mike.
Yeah. You gotta go measure some signs now.
Yeah, right, that's my new day job. Awesome. All right, so I'll, I'll just hit this training point real quick. Um, once again, the map conference, hey, they finally released an agenda. Thursday would be a really, really great day, if anybody was hoping to just go for one day. Let me just read to you some of the topics that are on Thursday. Planning law, uh, planning unit developments, optimizing boards and committees. There's a session that's called beyond the master plan. There's a session that's called how to streamline development review. Uh, there's one that's called permit-ready housing plans. And there's one that's called innovations to parking standards. So I'm gonna try and be in three rooms at once on that day, because those are all things that are applicable to appear. So I encourage you to sign up.
All right, and then correspondence are in front of you, uh, I need to special on those. Seeing none, we will then go to commissioner comments. Commissioner Johnson?
Uh, just one thing, um, Home Depot, the hot dog stand, does anybody check out? I just happened to see the other day, the guy that was here, I think it looks great. The guy did a really, really nice job.
It's about as good as a cat's for a hot dog stand.
They're just playing, that's all, just turned out really nice. And that's it.
Good deal, Commissioner Brady, Brady?
Uh, no comment.
Commissioner Patterson?
Good, sorry.
Commissioner Atwood?
This might be dumb, but do we measure by the feet or by the foot? Cause in this language, it's all feet, and I was raised foot.
Well, it's written.
And every time I hear feet, it just.
This is how government gets downsized, Josh.
Sorry.
Was, feet would be one.
I know.
Foot is only one, right?
Yeah.
I'll tell you what. I was cutting wood for a deck a couple of years ago and I had two measuring tapes and discovered they were off by about a eighth of an inch to each other. So let's just not say by feet of the inch.
Um, the, the one thing I did want to say is, so through kayaking through the, the city limits, the businesses that are by the creek or the Flint River, there's always garbage caked along the river edge there. So I, I don't know if there's anything we can do now as far, um, as looking into that stuff and moving forward, but a concern of mine, protecting our waterways, and it might not be appropriate to talk here in a planning commission. That's just, I don't like litter and.
Worse than that?
Along the river.
Along the river.
Along the riverfront, all the.
Especially with big parking lots.
Flint River.
I mean, we try, we do our best to clean it up every year. I think, uh, Steve Crest takes over there, especially by Home Depot.
Yep.
Uh, but that's a very steep bank. But, I don't know, it's just a concern of mine, that and feet and foot.
All right. Vice Chair Roberts?
Uh, just, uh, happy Lapeer Day's weekend, hope to see everybody down there at some point.
Mayor Mark Twain?
Just a couple of things, does anybody know what's happening with the sports arena on, uh, Davidson Road? All that's been finished for a whole month, five weeks of driving by that place is their parking lot. Are they doing anything?
Activity inside.
There's, there's activity.
Well, there had, well, only one time did they have three cars out there.
Well, here's what I do know, their parking lot looks amazing.
I know, it's great, that's why I'm waiting for something to happen.
If we want to tell people what their parking lot should look like, tell them to drive over there.
But does, is it, any comments, Ben, do you know anything, or?
I believe they have building department issues, I'm not sure, exactly sure what the issues are.
Okay, so they're.
That's something for.
The, the short.
They're moving forward at least.
The short answer is that they had a leak and it was not habitable for a little while.
Yeah.
Um, but they, last I heard, they're anticipated being partially open by October.
Okay, cause at one time, did they say April or something, so?
Oh, it changes every day.
I know, well, so, yeah, so, what construction does it? Including the painter and the house. Okay, the only other thing is, um, also the medical office building on the mill, Farley, that was moving along really good and then it kind of stopped.
Yesterday.
But today, I did see three heavy equipment.
There was a bunch of work going on yesterday, so.
So I was just concerned that all of a sudden, they weren't gonna finish it or do it, but that's still happening, is it?
Yep, as far as we know, yeah, construction's still going.
You know, when you drive by a place every day for some, ah, you got wet.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, there was quite a bit of activity there yesterday.
Okay, all right, good.
Good. All right, City Manager Womack?
Um, I can't remember if I told you guys I'm buying a house in the local area. Uh, it's gonna be accomplished hopefully by October, so I'll be living nearby. Um, Lapeer Days, I was very disappointed I couldn't get my pretzel, uh, today. Uh, I love that pretzel place, or an alpine air for that matter. And, uh, other than that, we're making good progress here. And, uh, I believe Ben has a announcement, which I'll let him make, but, uh, some exciting stuff coming across.
Yeah, we were awarded fifty thousand dollars from M E D C and from redevelopment-ready communities to redo the master plan and to redo our non-motorized plan. So very exciting. Um, the next step will be for us to work with the city to create a very formalized scope of work for both of those update projects. We have about eighteen months currently on the clock for the funding. So we were awarded it in mid-August and it doesn't expire until, I'm sorry, I can't remember, it's either the end of February or the end of March of twenty-seven, twenty-seven. So my goal right now, you know, just learning about all this this week, is for us to have a master plan kickoff meeting before the end of twenty-five. That's kind of my goal. So there will totally be some time that we need to work, um, administratively on the scope and talk about, you know, public engagement options and all that fun stuff. Um, so that'll take a month or two or three, but I really hope to kick off at least one of those two plans, um, by the end of twenty-five and I'm not, I have never worked on a non-motorized plan before. I know a lot of folks at Row have. I don't know if that is something that would be done with a planning commission.
That was handled by Rodney, the Parks Department.
Parks, okay.
And then Ben, just so you know, when I announced this at the city council meeting, it was entirely me, you had nothing to do with it.
Oh, I'm glad, it's your, it's your victory. Well, it's our victory, so, very exciting.
All right, uh, basically, I think, I can't second, uh, City Manager Womack, we are doing good here. And I think Lapeer is doing very well. And I must say to all those responsible for the bringing, uh, the bike, or back to the bricks event here, wow, just wow, what an event. And hopefully more and more come, so congrats James Alt, cause I'm sure he was the one heading that. So give that man a handshake and everybody else that, uh, is a volunteer or an elected official in Lapeer. Good deal, adjourned.
He's appointed official though.
What's that? Oh, appointed official.
Well, you're.
Yeah, appointed, elected, a volunteer.
Well, yeah, that's what, you guys know what I'm talking about.
Everybody's working hard for our city, yeah.
Yeah.
You're annoyed to the end of it, yeah.
I'm annoyed, I'm annoyed, I'm annoyed.
Hey Josh, love the song, but home and thunder, your question.
Yeah, I think, I think we already answered it when you said feet or foot.
Yeah.
I mean, just me and you were. Have you ever heard of tomato, tomato, two feet?
Yes.
But I really don't think so.
One feet?
I thought you were gonna say meters.
But I believe that they would have had.
I don't understand these language.